Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the city of San Juan at 6:00 P.M. May we rise for invocation? Mr. Arhona, can you lead us, sir?
Good evening, our heads. Your father, we thank you for everyone gathered here today. Also thank for your blessing given upon us. We ask you to guide us during our discussions and give us wisdom so that we can make adequate decisions. For this meeting to bring success and growth to our city, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Face a flag for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republican Party, to the citizens of San Juan, and to the people of the liberty and justice for our
Thank you, may be seated. Ms. Diana, do we have any public comments at this time? No, thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Yes, Mayor, Commissioner, good evening, community, staff, retirees, thank you for being here with us tonight. Mayor, we can start. I'd like to recognize a few retirees at this, from the city. I think there's four of them that we have here for present, and all of them together put about maybe sixty, eighty years' worth of experience that is leaving the city of San Juan. But they're leaving us in a good, positive note. It was a very great pleasure having worked with these individuals, very hard-working individuals, from the Mr. Alafa, Mr. Montemayor, Ms. Jackson, and Mr. Murillo. Where was Mr. Murillo? Mr. Murillo back there? Thank you all so much for your service. Mayor, we'll start with the first proclamation, if I may. I'd like to start with Mr. Murillo.
Here, go ahead, sir, yes.
Whereas Ramiro Murillo was born on October the 19th, in McAllen, Texas, to Mr. and Mrs. Ramon Murillo. And Mr. Murillo lived in the city of McAllen most of his life until he met Ms. Reyna Margarita Vallejo in 1985. And he married Ms. Vallejo in 1988 and moved to the city of San Juan where they raised their three daughters, Berenice, Cristina, and Annette, whom later gave them four grandchildren. And Mr. Murillo began his career with the city of San Juan in April, April 1996, with the Department of Utilities as an operator. Later, he acquired his TCQ license, B license, and became a plant operator with the wastewater department. And whereas Mr. Murillo was promoted to sewer collections in 2006 and worked his way to become sewer collection screw leader, where he left the department for fourteen years, and whereas he was always available day, night, and weekends when it came to sewer issues, and is well-known by his nickname, El Carnal, by his fellow coworkers. And whereas the city of San Juan wishes to honor Mr. Murillo for his distinguished service to the citizens of this great city for twenty-four years. And whereas the city of San Juan encourages everyone to congratulate Mr. Ramiro Murillo on his retirement and offer their sincere gratitude for his dedicated service to this beautiful city of San Juan. Now therefore, be resolved that Mayor Mario Garza, by the power vested in him as a mayor of the city of San Juan, along with Mayor Protempore Leonardo Lenny Sanchez, Commissioner Jesús Jesse Ramirez, Commissioner Ernesto Neto Ojardo, and Commissioner Marco Marqui Villegas hereby issue this tenth day of November 2020, this proclamation to Mr. Ramiro Murillo. Mr. Murillo, congratulations, sir. If we can, do the proclamation, then we'll take pictures. The next one, Mr. Alafa. Mr. Alafa has been here for what, fifty years, sir? Thirty? Whereas Omero Alafa was born in May 2000, Mr. and Mrs. Alafa and Mr. Omero Alafa resided in the city of Hidalgo most of his life. And whereas Mr. Alafa began his career with the San Juan Police Department in May 22nd, 1990, as an officer. And shortly after, on March 8th, 1991, became an investigator. And whereas Investigator Alafa was promoted to Sergeant of Investigations in August 1991, until three years later. In 1994, he was assigned to combine HIDA task force. And whereas in 1996, after getting out of the task force, he continued his previous duty as a Sergeant of Investigations. And on January the 10th, 2005, he was promoted to Lieutenant for the next fifteen years. And whereas the city of San Juan wishes to honor Lieutenant Omero Alafa for his distinguished service to the citizens of this great city for thirty years. And whereas the city of San Juan encourages everyone to congratulate Lieutenant Omero Alfa on his retirement and offer their sincere gratitude for his dedicated service to this beautiful city of San Juan. Now therefore, be resolved that Mayor Garza, by the power vested in him as a mayor of the city of San Juan, along with Mayor Protempore Leonardo Lenny Sanchez, Commissioner Jesús Jesse Ramirez, Commissioner Ernesto Neto Ojardo, and Commissioner Marco Marqui Villegas hereby issue this tenth day of November 2020, this proclamation to Mr. Omero Alafa. Congratulations, sir.
This time, I'm gonna go ahead and read Mr. José Montemayor's proclamation, sir. Whereas José Montemayor was born on October 2000, to Mr. and Mrs. Montemayor. And whereas he married Mrs. Montemayor on June 17th, 1979, and moved to the city of San Juan where they raised their four sons, José, Miguel, Carlos, and Joey. And whereas Mr. Montemayor began his career with the city of San Juan on June 4th, 1999, where he served the following departments: brush pickup, streets and alley, pot or whole crew, brush pickup driver. And whereas Mr. José Montemayor served his community with pride while working under all of these departments until October 30, 2020. And whereas the city of San Juan wishes to honor Mr. José Montemayor for his distinguished service to the citizens of the great city for twenty-one years and four months. And whereas the city of San Juan encourages everyone to congratulate Mr. José Montemayor to his retirement and offer their sincere gratitude for his dedicated service to this beautiful city of San Juan. Therefore, be resolved that I, Mario Garza, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of San Juan, along with Mayor Protempore Lenny Sanchez, Commissioner Jesse Ramirez, Commissioner Ernesto Neto Ojardo, and Commissioner Marco Villegas hereby issue the tenth day of November 20, the proclamation of Mr. José Montemayor. Congratulations, sir. And at this time, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for Mrs. Yolanda Jackson. Whereas Mrs. Yolanda Longoria was born on October 2000, to Mr. Romulo and Mrs. Chachita Longoria? Chachita, okay, Longoria, sorry. And whereas Mrs. Longoria grew up with a large family of fourteen, consisting of eight brothers and six sisters, and was second to the youngest children. And whereas Ms. Yolanda Longoria married Mr. Richard Jackson, July 10th, 1976, and continued residing in the city of Far. And whereas Mr. and Mrs. Jackson raised their four daughters in said city, Lisa, Crystal, Sandra, and Angelio. From where later came ten grandchildren, beautiful. And whereas Mrs. Jackson became her career with the city of San Juan on February 23rd, 2009, as a personal coordinator with the Department of Human Services. And whereas the city of San Juan wishes to honor Mrs. Yolanda Jackson for her distinguished service to the citizens of this great city for nine years. And whereas the city of San Juan encourages everyone to congratulate Mrs. Yolanda Jackson on her retirement and offer their sincere gratitude for her dedicated service to this beautiful city of San Juan. Now therefore, be resolved that I, Mario Garza, by the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of San Juan, along with Mayor Protempore Lenny Sanchez, Commissioner Jesse Ramirez, Commissioner Neto Ojardo, and Commissioner Marqui Villegas hereby issue this tenth day of November 2020, this proclamation to Mrs. Yolanda Jackson. I guess before we move on, I'd just like to congratulate the individuals who are here today. Thank you so much for coming and spending your evening at this very special meeting. As you can see, this is something special not only for the city of San Juan, but most important to the citizens of this beautiful community. I can't stress how I appreciate every single one of you all. And I know I've worked with you hand-to-hand, and I've seen the quality of work that every single one of you bring to this table, to this great city. And obviously, you know, there's gonna be people that we're gonna have to hire here in the future, but they got some big shoes to fill. That's all I can say. Because I'll tell you one thing, there's not too many hard-working employees. And most important, there's not too many dedicated employees in these municipalities. And I wish you, gentlemen and ma'am, I wish you the best of luck in your retirement. And all I can say is you have an open door here at the city of San Juan. If there's anything you need, in our behalf, we're here for you and your families, okay? God bless you and God bless your families. Thank you. Anybody else wanna, go ahead, sir?
Paul, I'd like to thank every single one of you all in retirement today. It's an honor, you know, we're losing, we're actually not losing, but it's an honor to have eighty-one years of experience in our city, combined of years of service with all you guys. I thank you very much for the years of service, dedication. I know with both, there's two out of the four that I worked directly through my law enforcement career, with Mr. Jackson through the social service and Mr. Alafa. We've been involved in some incidents in our law enforcement career. They're great individuals. I worked with them directly. And Mr. Murillo and Mr. Haddam, Haddamil, right? Yeah, Murillo, yeah, it was great. I didn't get to work directly with you guys, but I knew who you guys were at the city. And everybody speaks very highly of every single one of you guys. And I, God bless you guys for all your, on your retirement endeavors. Thank you very much for your service.
Anybody else? Did not, we'll go ahead and, you want to take some pictures?
If I may, ma'am?
Oh, go ahead, sir.
I also want to congratulate you on your retirement. I know you guys, all of you, were icons in your department. Ms. Jackson, as soon as you would walk in to go see Ms. Cordero, you're the first person that we would see. And Mr. Murillo, you've been also with the city for so long that each one of you gave more than what you needed to do, but you did it with passion. And I thank you for everything you did for our city of San Juan. You will be missed, but there's always breakfast. If you all want to meet for breakfast, let me know.
And don't forget, we will extend invites every time. You know, we do have any type of festivals or any gatherings, but as you all know, during this COVID, this is pretty hard, you know? So God willing, and I pray that all our doctors and nurses and our scientists can come out with a good, you know, cure for this, so that way our lives can, you know, continue normal. But obviously, at this time, we just gotta respect it and we gotta take care of each other as well, okay? So like I say, you guys have an open-door policy here with us, okay? Thank you once again. Did you want to say? Por favor, you can come to the podium. Soon as he's done, anyone else of the retirees want to say a couple of words? It's really up to you. As soon as we're done here, we got some little snacks in the back, you know, for you and your family. Help yourself out.
Le doy gracias a Dios por primera mentira de gracias a Dios y a Mr. Roberto Lorero que me dio el trabajo en la ciudad. Y fue un placer para mí trajar aquí en la ciudad. Se me fue de veintiún años, se me fue muy pronto. Pero mi familia quería que me retirara y todo. Y Mr. Roel Garza, Mr. Cepeda, Juan Soto, son buenos patrones, estrictos pero buenos patrones. Pero todo es del trabajo. Y les doy gracias, yo sé que vas a seguir para adelante y es que eres que better, es que eres que better. Porque hay buenos trabajadores en la ciudad. Y gracias a todos ustedes.
Muchas gracias, Mr. Murillo. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Murillo?
Good evening, everybody. I would just like to say thank you all for giving me the opportunity to work with the great city of San Juan for twenty-four years. It was a hell of a ride. It was a beautiful roller coaster ride. I'd like to just give you a thanks. It was a great honor and a privilege to have worked with the city of San Juan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to thank each and every one of you and the prior commissioners and mayors and city managers. And most of all, Adele, for have given me the time that I had. I loved what I did. I want you all to know that. I loved what I did. I love working with the whole staff, the whole two-hundred-and-forty-nine when I started and two-hundred-and-some when I left. Each and every one of them was special to me, and I treated each and every one of them as if I was treating my mom or my dad. That respect I gave to each and every one of the employees when they showed up and they needed or wanted or just be there. I did this out of my heart. And I leave with a broken heart. I wish I could still be there, but I do want to retire and just enjoy life with my family and my husband and
Your grandchildren.
And my ten grandchildren, yes. Two twin girls and two twin boys, so that multiplied it really quick. But I enjoy the family. I enjoy my husband just being together. And I wish we could travel, which was a plan, but we haven't had a chance yet. But do know that my job with the city of San Juan was a memorable one and a one that I did with a lot of love and passion because I loved each and every one of the employees as my mom and dad. And I gave them that respect as my mom and dad. And I think they all know that. Okay? Thank you so very much. God bless you and God bless San Juan.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Like I say, help yourself out. You know, we got a little bit of snacks over there. I think each of you guys have a cake. Also, make sure you take that home, please. Go ahead, Mr. Alafa.
Thank you all for allowing me to work here in San Francisco for two years now, for thirty years. And some of you were not here when I started, not even the captain was here. Now the acting chief, but thank you all for allowing me to be here for this short time, thirty years and some months. And what can I say? If you ever need me, you know, you can reach me at nine one one. Now, my phone number, they have it. If you want, I can give it to you. If you ever need something from me. And that's about it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
What service? We're in the donation shop.
We continue working, right, sir? So Mayor, Commissioners, real quick, this is a true testimony of what our stories are all about. True dedication, commitment to the city, beautiful employees. I know we always joke around. We're gonna miss Mrs. Jackson's coffee at three o'clock in the afternoon, Mr. Murillo running all over the place, Mr. Alafa jugando todo el tiempo allá con nosotros, telling us that va a recibir, este, va a perseguir los jabalines para los tamales y nunca nos trajo nada. But anyways, that's, this is a true example, sir, and Commissioners, that these employees are very dedicated employees and they're loyal to the city. They're very committed and it's heads off to them. Again, on behalf of the commission, let's give them one big round of applause for their great service.
Continue on their presentation, Mayor Commissioner. We have, on the presentation of departmental reports, we have Planning and Zoning, Department of Parks and Recreation, San Juan Memorial Library, and Department of Sanitation. Every director is here available. Should you have any questions for them?
Sir, Arhona, if I may, ma'am?
Go ahead, sir, yes, sir.
I haven't looked at the, at the report for, for Planning and Zoning. I don't know, Mr. Escobar's online. But are we issuing out?
Yes.
Okay, are we issuing out garage sale permits? We still, we already started? Okay. That's why I wasn't, because I've seen several, but
Heard of that, given that they practice the social distancing and obviously the hands sanitizing and stuff like that, and the mask.
All right, yes, thank you.
I guess, Mr. Willingham, in reference to the parks, I know that they're doing some construction over here at the municipal parks. I believe maybe, it looks like the batting cages or?
Correct. Yes, we began, matter of fact, today, staking out the area, cleaning out the area that where the batting cages are gonna go. We have everything set up. We'll start pouring concrete next Tuesday. They'll deliver it next Tuesday. And they'll be setting the anchors, big anchors. It's gonna be a really nice facility. We've seen some drafts of it, and it's gonna be a really nice facility. We're finally see the light at the end of the tunnel with, got a couple of things left to do. But it's coming together real nicely here within the next month. We should be finishing up with it.
I guess, I guess you may want to get with Mr. Arhona in reference to having a ribbon cutting. I don't know how soon you guys want to do it, or I don't know how long they're gonna take to finish up the cages. You know, as soon as that's complete, I think maybe you should just get with them and, Mr. Arhona, and figure out what would be a good time to do the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, no, we'll definitely coordinate that. Everything that needs to be in the park now at this point has been ordered or has been started for completion. So we're, we're getting there here pretty quickly.
Did you double-check on that canopy? Remember I had?
Yes, we are having it looked at, and as a matter of fact, they'll be in either Thursday or Friday to, the one on the south side?
Correct.
Yeah, it was kind of off the logo, so yeah, we're gonna get that corrected.
I think the one on the north was pretty, it looked good, right?
Yes, it was a lot better. There is a little, a couple of things that need to be trimmed up on it, but the one on the south side needs to be addressed. So yes, we are getting on that.
Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Willingham? If not, thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hearing for conditional use for the sale of alcoholic beverages off-premise. Lot 232 is Business 83 legally described as Lot 1, Block B, Letter Block subdivision located southwest corner of Business 83 and Iowa Street as requested by Maribel Salinas. Mayor, the applicant is taking over liquor store that was open on February the sixth, I mean, February 2019. The property is located at the southwest corner of Iowa and Business 83. She is applying, the lady is applying for a drive-through business and conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, which is wine and beer, for off-premise consumption only. The proposed days and hours of operation is Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sundays will be closed. The following list of requirements for the liquor store is there for you, I mean, they're within the agenda. And again, this is a public hearing. Should you have any questions, we can do that after we open it.
Okay, okay, all right. So at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:30 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions from the members of the commission in regards to this matter? As far as, I guess, Mr. Escobar, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you get any type of resistance when, when it comes to the installation of the cameras or or when, for these, for these new businesses and stuff like that?
I couldn't hear what you said, Mayor.
Well, can you answer that?
Yeah, honestly, Mayor, we usually don't get any type of resistance when it's on a business such as this year. We haven't had any, any issues with any property owners or store owners that does not want to, they refuse.
And this was just a question, just to, I was just curious about that.
And I think it's, it's always good to have those security cameras for, to prevent.
Yeah, well, I mean, I say that because you know how there's, well, obviously, there's a price range on the cameras and stuff like that, so.
But no, we don't.
No, okay, good, good, good.
That I'm aware of.
Okay, no problem. Any questions? If not, I will go ahead and close this at 6:31 P.M. Is there motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, the next item is hold a public hearing for conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption at the Wing Barn Restaurant located 707 West Interstate Highway Number Two, Suite 100 legally described as Lot 3, the shops at HEB subdivision located to the east of the San Juan HEB as requested by Mr. Roberto Science. Mr. Science applying for a conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, the wine and beer for on-premise consumption at the Wing Barn Restaurant located at the new commercial plaza adjacent to the San Juan HEB. The applicant will need to comply with the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, TABC, requirements. The proposed days and hours of operation is Monday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to midnight. And again, the requirement, the list of requirements is within the agenda.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:32 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against, any questions from the members of the commission? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:33 P.M. Is there a motion to approve? And second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, hold a public hearing for conditional use permit for a drive-through business and for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption at the Cool Spot Drive-Thru located at 912 is Business 83 legally described as Lot 1, Mirela subdivision is requested by Javier Cabazos. Mr. Cabazos applying for conditional use permit for a drive-through business and the sale of alcoholic beverages, wine and beer, for off-premise consumption. He's taking over the business that was originally open in the year of 2018. The proposed days and hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to midnight, Friday and Saturday from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sundays from 12:00 p.m. to midnight. And again, the list of requirements is attached on the agenda.
I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:34 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against, any questions from the members of the commission? No?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, sir, yes, sir.
And it's not necessarily regarding this one, Mr. Arhona, but I know that we've had three regarding beer and wine. Are, and my, I should have asked earlier, but as far as bars, are they allowed to open already, or is the, or bars still allowed, no?
The bars are not, are not allowed yet.
Okay, and if, if they are opening up, who would be the one to enforce the closure?
Oh, sure?
Yes.
That'll be court enforcement as, as the Planning and Zoning Department.
Okay, but if, but if they're opening after five, like the bars that are opening after five, till five to two, who would, who would enforce it?
That'll be court enforcement in cooperation with PD.
Yes. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Now, if it's an establishment that sells food?
Right, it all depends on the formula.
But if their number one source of income is alcohol, then?
Right.
All right, yeah, I just want to, I just want to put that on the record, right?
Definitely.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:35 P.M. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item under ordinance is consider adoption of an ordinance in the first reading for a voluntary annexation petition of the 1.61 acre tract of land out of Lot 4, Block 27, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision as per map recording, Volume 1, Pages 24 through 26. Map breaker, Hidalgo County, Texas, located approximately a quarter of a mile south of Moore Road along the west side of Cesar Chavez Road is requested by Mr. Ricardo Casares. The planning department is processing a residential subdivision located approximately a quarter of a mile south of Moore Road along the west side of Cesar Chavez Road. Part of the subdivision is outside the city limits but within the city of San Juan Extraterritorial Jurisdiction, which is the ETJ. And it is the city's policy to annex subdivisions processed and approved within the city's ETJ. On August 11, 2020, the city commission approved a resolution 2014, accepting petition for voluntary annexation and setting dates and times for public hearing.
And this is an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Arhona? If not, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
The next item is under appointments, Mayor Commissioners. We need to untable this item as it was tabled at the previous meeting.
At this time, is there a motion on table? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, sir.
Consider the appointment of representative and alternate, an alternate for fiscal year 2020, 2021 to the Amigos del Valle Board of Directors.
Now, I know, two, 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 I know this board consists of them meeting at 12 o'clock, am I correct? And it's once a month?
Twice a month.
Twice a month, at 12:00 P.M.?
Yes.
Okay, and who's allowed to be appointed? Is it, can it be a director or assistant director or members of the commission or?
Any director or any elected official?
Any director, like?
Can it be any?
Yeah, sure, an elected official either.
Can it be an assistant director?
Yes.
It can?
Yes.
Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to appoint Bob Garza to the Amigos del Valle Board. Commissioner Neto Ojardo second it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Did you get that? Okay.
Um, Mayor, the issue's come up is whether or not he's a, I know, I'm not certain if he's a director of the he's a director of the city or he's a EDC board, EDC. Assistant director, so.
That's, I can make a call to ask because it is an entity from the city.
Well, this is, I mean, I mean, that's why I made that clear the last time. You know? I did mention whether he's a director or an assistant director, I mean, or any employee.
The issue is not.
But I get that, I get that. He works under the EDC.
Is he a director of the, a director of the city or is he just the director of EDC, a separate entity? He's assistant EDC?
Director.
Director of the EDC and not the city? And they're two separate entities, so the question becomes is whether or not they see the EDC as a director of the city in your, in your organizational chart? Are EDC employees as a director or not? So, so if they're not, then he's not a director of the city. He would be an assistant director of a separate entity, which, which would be the EDC of San Juan. That's, that's where I'm kind of.
Call and double check, and if it's, we can do a contingent upon that, it's allowed?
Well, I mean, for some reason, if they say we can't, then we just have to bring it back. Would you do it like that?
Oh, give him a call on Thursday.
It was unanimous approving Bob Garza, and then if for some reason, if they tell you we can't, then we'll come back.
We'll bring it back.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes. The next item under discussion.
Mr. Arhona, before you move on, this one says representative and alternate. Is there supposed to be two?
Yes, it's the representative and then alternate, so yes, we need to vote on an alternate. Sorry for that.
As an alternate?
No, no, you, you could vote on alternate too. Just in case he, he either can't make it or let's say they don't approve him as a, as a, as a.
So, so.
You can have a.
So at this time, I'll go ahead and, as the alternate, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve Mr. Arhona. For, for the Amigos del Valle Board. Commissioner Neto Juajardo. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on the discussion and possible action, we have discussion and possible action to approve change order number two to the wastewater treatment plant improvements, phase one sludge the water facility, Texas Water Development Board, project number seventy-three seventy-nine six for the replacement of existing asphalt in an amount now to exceed forty-two thousand two hundred dollars with fifty-two cents. An authorized city manager to execute all related documents and budget amendments needed. Please, please.
Hello, Mayor Commissioners. As part of the project for phase one that's going on at, at the wastewater plant for the solid dewatering facility, better known as the belt press building, which is actually a rotor screw, the area right in front of that, that, that new facility is, is, has been deteriorated. It, it was an asphalt road, and it is to be replaced during phase two, but the, the facility will come into operation way before phase two is going to put into place, so that's why we're asking for the change order, so we can get that area replaced, so we won't have issues with the trucks as they come by to load up and unload the containers for the sludge removal. This way, there'll be, a smooth transition from the new facility onto the existing facility and move from there. And the money is coming from the surplus funds that were left from the first time sewer. There was some money left over there that, that wasn't used as part of the project, so we've already requested authorization from Texas Water Development Board to use that money, and they've approved it. We just need to ratify that, to change order here so we can submit it for them, so they can go ahead and prove it as well. So that's why we're here today.
Okay. All righty. Any questions for Mr. Salinas or Mr. Arhona?
I think, what was the cost for the increase?
It's actually forty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-two, and the agenda says not to exceed forty-two thousand in case there's, there's an issue in, in cost of material, and the reason being because right now with COVID, we've been seeing a huge increase in metal and concrete and all kinds of construction materials, so that's why the forty-two thousand, not to exceed that. We don't anticipate it exceeding it, but we just wanted to put a little cushion in there just in case. That's why the forty-two.
Any other questions?